All right, call to order the St. Cloud Metropolitan Transit Commission Board to order. It is four o'clock on Tuesday, July 16th. And then everyone is accounted, including new member Dave Masters, representing City of St. Cloud. Give you a chance to introduce yourself a little bit in your general business, but is there a, any additions to the agenda?
No.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, discussion, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post Kerry's consent to geniuses five through eight, your motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post that Kerry's open forum, anyone here for the open forum or online? All right, seeing no one, hearing no one, we'll go on to, oops, is that somebody there?
Small glitch.
All right, then we'll go on to general business introduction. Dave Masters now taking over John Lippert's spot as a current city council member and another representative of St. Cloud. So you just introduce yourself.
Sure.
You have seven seconds.
Seven seconds. Okay, okay, we got, we got, Dave Masters, just a little background, I'm a teacher all my life in St. Cloud quite a bit. I taught about 43 years and I retired recently, I went back and this coming fall will be teaching, this will be my 47th year of teaching, so a long time, but I really enjoy it and so forth, and I enjoy being on the city council as well with Dave and are in this, at the St. Cloud City Council. I think this is my, like, 17th year on the council, so quite a long time there. I consider it a privilege to be on the Metro Bus. I teach right now disabled students that are 18 to 22, and last year I really didn't have a clear understanding of the Metro or dial ride or any of those kinds of things, but I just want to mention, I was really impressed. Nick came over, worked with our students and so forth, took them through the registration process and made a big difference in their life by having that dial ride, you know, because it opened up a whole world to them, so they had transportation to get around and so forth. And then we also had students that weren't able to get their driver's license, weren't able to pass their permit test and so forth, but we rode the Metro Bus and took a lot of field trips and taught them about, you know, mobility and how to use the Metro Bus, and I myself learned how to read the schedules and how to do some of those things, and that was good for me because I, you know, I miscalculated one, I may always mention this real quick, I only take about an hour.
All right, we're, I'm just keeping track, so you've used about a year of your service.
It was in the winter time, I just wanted to mention this because instead of, it was in the winter time, we thought, oh, we can get off at Walmart or start telling, we got off and I thought, oh, the next bus will be here in about 10 minutes, and then, oh, I miscalculated, that would be like 35 or 40 minutes or something like that, and if we would just rode the bus around, it was the same bus that was going on to another deal. So, you know, I heard back from the students, hey, you gotta figure this out a little better. But anyways, it's a wonderful, and I'll tell you, the drivers and everything, very helpful, very friendly, so it's a pleasure to be on Metro Bus Board.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Welcome, and we'll go on to then the next item, election of officers.
I have a question. Yeah, a question about that. So whose terms are up? Three of us are running for reelection in our cities. I'm not sure what my mayor, obviously the election's not here yet.
Your appointments might be different for each particular city, but your appointments are made statutorily, so once you're appointed, you have a term of law, a term that you serve that really unless, unless you're required by your city to resign.
Okay.
You would still serve. It would take your own personal resignation to do that, and if that's a condition of, of the city's appointment, for St. Cloud, for example, that's not the case, it wasn't the case, I don't think, before Rick came on, because I think prior to you, Paul, Rigsman served for many years after, after he left the council. And John Lippert, obviously, is a great example, was served several years, and prior to, I think it was Carolyn Garvin who served several, and even though I'm retiring, and I think my term ends 2027, 2027, so I'll remain on until 2027.
And I know.
And Rick's leaving right now.
Yes, he's gone, well, down, down to four now. My, my term's not up until June of 2026, I believe. I think that's what you call it. And I'm not sure, new mayor, I think they could remove me if they wanted to. I don't believe that'll happen though, so I'm just curious, with officers, who's gonna be here, who's not?
You know, it's, I think if, if there's no change and no direction of any change, I would assume you're still on and expect it to be on until your term ends, and that would be a decision. Your statutory appointments are no different than we would have for, we have similar in the HRA and our EDA, those are statutory appointments, they're not, they're not city appointments. Once you're appointed, whatever that process is, you'd have to resign in order for you not to be serving, unless you might have a policy that requires you to resign.
Right. I'm not aware of one, but we know that.
And prior to you, I don't think we, we had a resignation, I think, or?
We let his term expire.
We don't bring all that.
Have water over the dam.
There was a couple, and we let one expire, one the, we typically, we typically appoint the mayor in that situation, they didn't appoint the mayor.
Yeah, but it's statutory for continuity's sake, so that there's not a lot of change since it is a governing body that has taxing authority.
Well, when I saw the election, the reason I brought it up is I saw election of officers, I wanted to know who the three of us can be left, if?
My term for here is up next year.
In June?
Twenty-five.
Okay.
So you'd still be here?
Yeah.
And if I'm the absent, absent of a member or a officer, then there would be a filling of the vacancy regardless for those positions.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd motion to keep the slate the same.
Second.
The secretary, John Lebert was the secretary, so we would have to have a new secretary.
I amend my motion to have Board Member Masters the secretary.
You don't take. Boy, look at that, you're ready. See, see, that's what happens when you talk for more than three minutes.
Excited to be here, trying to get my opportunity.
I just want to clarify, is this like taking notes throughout the meeting?
No. We'll let you know for the vote.
We have it covered.
Yeah, you just have to sign.
Yeah.
It's moved and seconded, any discussion? Any other nominations, any other nominations? Third time, any other nominations, seeing none, nominations will close, we'll vote on the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Post Kerry, so congratulations.
Welcome.
And Fay goes way up with that.
Yeah. You bring donuts at the next meeting.
Usually when you miss a meeting, you get Paul and Kerry for something.
Well, that, that is a secretary, you should bring donuts.
That's right.
Or pizza.
We'll go on then to consideration, I remember a lot of consideration of fiscal year 2025 budget proposal and tax levy.
Good afternoon, commissioners. We are in the preliminary stages of the 2025 fiscal year budget proposal and tax levy. As you know, our fiscal year starts October 1st, and so we have to have our final budget approved in September, so this is the preliminary. Again, as you read in the memo, we are looking to increase the tax levy by $250,000 this year. Again, the COLA is a 2% increase overall. All the other details were in the memo, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, otherwise.
I have a question, Ms. Chairman. With what's next on the agenda, is there something budgeted for that next year? How much is, if we redo the routes, and I know this is fluff-fluff, so I don't know what's, what they're gonna present, what's the cost of implement, implementation of these new routes? And if, if there's a cost, obviously, is that budgeted for somewhere in here?
So we've asked them to give us a couple of different options. The first would be basically a cost neutral option.
Okay.
And then the second would be, in an ideal world, what would those options look like? You know, what would their cost, and then, or what would, what would an ideal system look like? And then we could budget those costs in increments. And so we don't know what that's gonna look like yet, because we haven't seen what that ideal.
Okay, so there's nothing in the budget for implementation yet?
No.
Okay.
And that wouldn't happen in '25.
Okay.
The, the implementation of that would be in mid-'26.
Okay, all right. That answered that.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions, discussion?
And again, it includes the, the five-year CIP is built into that as well, and kind of detailed out as well, so. So, I mean, other than fine tuning it, I will then plan to bring back the final in September with the final levy as well then, but then I would need approval for the preliminary and then the preliminary levy as well.
Oh. Ooh, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the preliminary?
Yeah, what is that, do we know valuation projections at this point?
Yep.
That you're basing that off of?
I just use 2024. You don't, I don't have '25 yet, and that puts us at a, I have that in here, sorry. In 2024, we are at 2.73 tax levy, the tax capacity value, put it at 2.93.
Sorry, I guess I'm trying to ask, the projected 2025 tax, taxable value?
I don't have that yet.
Will we have that by the August or September?
I normally get it like late October.
Okay.
And then the final doesn't come till February.
And what do you, so we've been guided initially from City Sartell at a zero or flat, they believe valuation should be flat coming off of a, what, a 14% increase and a 16, I think?
So that's why I put the 2.93, that would be at flat.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post Kerry's unanimously, we'll move on to item. Oh, we already did that. We did both of those, one motion?
Yep.
Good.
We're good, we gotta make up for Dave.
That's right, that's right, see, we had to take a whole item and double it.
All right, all right, all right.
I have 13, long-range transit, flat update.
Okay, Dr. Dave, everybody, commissioners, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great, I think I'm gonna share my screen. I do have about a 20-minute presentation
that I'm gonna walk you through and give you an update on where we're at with the long-range plan. We're calling it Metro Bus Forward, so if you hear that, that is the same thing. So let me go here and make sure. Let's try this one more time. Things are always so slow when I'm trying to share. Let's do that. So hopefully you can see that at this point. And so what I'd like to talk to you today, just give you an update on the study, I'll walk you through what we did in terms of developing service alternatives, and then most of what I'll spend today is talking about some of the draft service recommendations that are, that we're getting input from the community and from riders right now, and then we'll talk a little bit about next steps. So I just wanted to, and let me back up just a little bit, I'm sorry, everybody, my name is Paul Loody with Nelson Nygaard, I'm a principal, and I've been working with Metro Bus staff on this project. We started back in May of 2023, so I'm the project manager for the project. And so I wanted to give you an update on where we're at with the schedule. We started, really got started in earnest, I would say, about this time last year in July and August. We did a lot of surveying works, we did an onboard survey, we did a Passat Community Survey, we did a lot of stakeholder engagement at that point, we did a planning game workshop in November. Some of you may have been involved in that, and we headed a beautiful facility in South Rapids, so it was great. And then we wrapped kind of a, kind of the first phase of the project, I would say, where we had the, all the survey work that we did, a lot of input, a lot of good input from existing riders and from the community that helped to form the next phase, which is what we're working on now. We also had our kind of existing conditions reports, we did a lot of analysis related to where people are coming and going in the region, how has that changed over time? We looked at the, you know, at a higher level, how people were riding the bus, how many people were riding each route. And so we called that kind of our state of the system report. One thing we were waiting for, though, was more detailed information on where people were riding the bus and where they're getting on and off exactly at each stop and when they're getting on and off at each of those stops. So that was really important, and we, Metro Bus installed what are called automatic passenger counters on the bus, the buses, and we counted passengers getting on and off. So we did that in kind of, well, we, I say we, but Metro Bus did that in January and February. We got the data and we were able to look at that data, we built an online dashboard, and we were able to really evaluate each of the existing routes. And so from there, then we started developing alternatives, and I'll walk you through some of those. And our goal is to refine those alternatives in August, September, once we get input from the community and from you, and then ideally come back with a preferred recommended plan in October to have you adopt the plan, and then we move into implementation. So then there would be, in our scope is to do some scheduling and run cutting, so that just means developing schedules for the buses and how they would be different with the new, with some of the changes included in the recommended service plan. In the middle of all this, and I'll give you, I've got a slide about this, is a fare study, so we did look at the existing fares, and we've got a recommendation for, we did some scenario planning and analysis of fares and what the impact would be in terms of ridership and in terms of fare revenue. And so we've got, we did that sort of in the middle while we were waiting for that passenger data, so got some information to share on that. So, so this is just kind of what I already walked through, we did the community survey, this is our dashboard, if you could see, there's a image on the bottom middle of the slide here, we built a dashboard, so every single route we could look at, where people were boarding by individual trip and by hour. So it was really important for us to see how there are changes in how people are writing, when they're writing throughout the week, as well as, you know, what we call productivity, so how many passengers per hour of service is out there. So we built a dashboard that allowed us to develop some of the alternatives. We've got, and then the, the map in the upper right-hand corner is very hard for you to see, but basically it's where, system-wide, where people are using the Metro Bus service. And we did a little heat map, and so, but we've also got this at the individual stop and route level. So we've done, we've done a lot of work, we did the planning game workshop in, in November, that basically helped us understand what some of the regional priorities were in terms of, if you were to make changes, how would you do this? Would you continue doing the, providing the service the way that you're providing it, or would you change things around? So we've done a lot of work there, the fare analysis, this is, we basically, there's a lot more detail here, but I thought I'd just give you kind of a two-minute overview of what we did. So we did five scenarios, we had a series of, of goals related to aligning to the peers and making sure that you're, you're meeting other agency goals. And essentially what we did is like have five different options for what you could do, and what would the, the impact in terms of revenue, so fare box revenue and ridership. So if you were to increase fares, that usually has an impact on ridership. But we also wanted to, basically through this process, we came to a recommended scenario, and this could be a whole presentation in and of itself, but essentially what we're suggesting is that you kind of align your fares a bit more to your, to your peers, and you reduce some of the, some of the multipliers. So a multiplier would be your base fare and what, how many times multiplied you get to be a day pass, end of the 31-day pass. And again, most of it is related to aligning it with your peers. And so some of the big things would be to increase the base fare from, to $1.50, from $1.25, and then, but the, but the multipliers would actually go down a little bit, even if the, the day pass and the 30, the day pass goes up by a quarter, but the, but the monthly pass goes down by $2. So again, aligning those fare multipliers, that does have an impact on dial ride pair transit, so that would go up a little bit, but, but using those same multipliers. And the impact of these would be to have a, a slight change in ridership, so very, probably the smallest change in ridership compared to all of the scenarios that we looked at, and then a, a pretty moderate change in terms of fare revenues. So your fare revenue would go up and a pretty minimal change in, in fare, in ridership. So again, we could talk about the fare analysis a lot, but I just wanted to give you a snapshot of what we did there. We could have a full report on that. So basically, our, what we've been doing over this year really is developing service alternatives. So, my computer's going slow, there we go. So we had, to, to get a sense of how you might want to change things with the system, one of the things that we always do is to develop alternatives, and we say, okay, well, you could do this, or you could do that. So the planning game workshop was really our opportunity to get a sense from you about how you might want to change things. So based on that, we then had our ridership data, we knew where people were using the bus more and where they maybe weren't using it as much, and then we developed a couple of alternatives. So one of them was really focused on getting frequency back in the system. So you used to run 30-minute service prior to 2018, 2017. Of course, the pandemic changed a lot, but right, but, but frequencies have gone down and have stayed about hourly for most of your routes. So this alternative, and as Sonny mentioned, I think, it was Sonny, that the, what we wanted to do is to do kind of a cost-neutral scenarios. So these are more, mostly cost-neutral, say, that may not be exactly the same, but mostly cost-neutral in terms of operating cost. And so we developed two alternatives, one that focused on frequency, getting frequency back on major corridors and connecting major destinations, connecting where riders are mostly using the system. And then we had another one that was really more focused on frequency around coverage, and so providing geographic coverage, and, which is more like what you're doing now. So the frequency alternative is really a bit more of a shift back to providing frequent service, that does mean that in some areas, there would be less service than today. And then we also looked at sort of expanded service priorities, so where, in a not cost-neutral scenario, where would you start to layer on to the network? So we had these two alternatives, and we presented this to, we had a workshop with staff, and we talked through a lot of these different options, and the other thing that we wanted to consider as we were doing this is the new transit hub. And so that will change the route network a little bit in terms of being able to serve that new hub. And so this was, and you should all probably know where it's at, at Second Avenue and Sun Dial and Wade Park, so we wanted to basically make sure that in both of those scenarios that we were reflecting this new transit hub. So the, the first scenario that we developed was, as I mentioned, the focus on frequency. So this was really about higher frequency service on the major corridors where the ridership was the strongest. It also was focused on reducing some of the duplication in the service, in the network, streamlining it a bit, so less detouring and more straight-line alignments, making sure that a lot of the routes are bidirectional, and that's really important from a, from a customer standpoint. They really appreciate not having to ride the loop all the way around. We've been hearing that from, we heard that from, from the onboard survey, but we also have, starting to hear it on, I'll show you the, the recommended scenario, that the, people, people recognize that it takes longer when you have one-way service. So really, this scenario really focuses on bidirectional service, and, but providing a bit less service in areas where there really isn't much ridership, and so focusing it on where you're getting the most ridership potential. Most of this would be focused on weekday versus weekend change of service, so there would still be a little bit less service on weekends, and the frequency would be, would be higher on weekdays, when trips tend to be much stronger. And, but we didn't change, because we wanted to keep this cost-neutral as close as we could, we didn't change the service span. So it's probably hard for you to see these maps, but we also provided kind of a frequency map associated with both of these scenarios. So this one really concentrates frequency on major corridors, it does connect the four cities, and so each of the cities would have frequent service, sort of 30-minute service, and then most of the routes kind of on the outskirts of the region would be, would continue to be hourly. So that was the first scenario. The second scenario is where we introduced some, you know, some, some different coverage-oriented service. So this is maintaining a lot of what you currently have in terms of providing coverage throughout the region, and even if it, even if it means that some areas would see service that does, that has very little or no ridership even. So, but we wanted to show this as an option, so again, this maintains much of the existing network, it does reduce some of the duplication and streamlines the routes a little bit in certain places where we were looking at, because we wanted to combine, you know, different priorities, but also the data, what's the data telling us, and where people are actually using the service. There would be, in this scenario, we also introduced kind of an on-demand service in Wade Park, but kept most of the other areas focused on fixed route service. So we had those two scenarios, and let me see if I can. So one of the key themes from when we had our workshops with staff was really strong support for Alternative 1, some modifications. And we knew, of course, that the West Side Transit Center in Wade Park would need to be reflected in the, in the service plans, but that there was really strong support. This very much aligned with existing passengers, we got feedback from the onboard survey, was, was about frequency, they were, they were interested in more frequent service on connecting corridors. We need, we also heard in our scenarios that there'd be better service in the Sartell area, there's a lot of new destinations there, so we kind of went back to the drawing board in Sartell, and also looking at cross-town connections. So there are, you only have right now one cross-town route, I would, I would classify as a cross-town route that goes from the Crossroads area to South Rapids. So in our scenario, you'll see we are starting to introduce a new cross-town connection from Sartell to Wade Park. So this is kind of how people are, new ways that people are traveling. So we wanted to introduce that as part of the, when we get into the recommended scenario. And then, of course, thinking about the high schools, so we're still, would still be provided some limited service to the high schools, so you may not see that on the maps, but all the high schools would continue to have some limited service that align with the school bell times. And, yeah, and then this one was related to kind of connecting destinations so that people didn't have to transfer as many times to get to multiple destinations in the region. So our draft service recommendations, which I'll show you in just a minute, are really more like Alternative 1, which I just talked about. And so it's more about frequent service and getting connections back to major destinations and doing that as frequently as, as we can. So we're introducing some 30-minute routes on some of the strongest corridors and connecting some of the biggest destinations in the region. Most of the kind of core network is both more direct and more bidirectional service. We're, and in doing that, we're reallocating some of the service from areas that have not much ridership or even no ridership and making the best use of your existing resources as we can. In our, in our, because we're trying to stay mostly cost-neutral here, we are maintaining the same hours of service as today, so we're not expanding, even though that was one of the things that your riders really are interested in, is having later service or even earlier service. At this point, in the kind of a cost-neutral scenario, we're maintaining the same number of service hours, service span, I should say, so when it starts and ends, both on weekday and weekend, but we are introducing some cross-town connections, some new, connecting those new travel patterns that we're seeing. We are gonna bring in some on-demand service in some of the low demand, low-density areas, so this is one of the things we're recommending as opposed to fixed route. And then redesigning everything around the West Side Transit Center in Wade Park and, and maintaining that kind of a baseline network that can, it's basically the structure of the network would be, would be changed, but then, once you start to layer on top of that in terms of improvements, that, that network doesn't change a whole lot, we just add frequency. So that was kind of the goal, was to get to a baseline network that can be built on over time. on over time. So in terms of the draft recommendations, again, these maps are probably going to be hard to see in that room, but the higher-frequency corridors that we focused on was really from downtown St. Cloud to Crossroads and then to the new Transit Center. That would be one. So a couple of routes connecting those two areas. There's a lot of major destinations there. A second higher-frequency route would be connecting Sartell and North St. Cloud, I guess, and the Walmart in Sartell, connecting that back down to downtown St. Cloud. That would be the second one. A third one would be connecting St. Cloud up to downtown Sauk Rapids. So that'd be another 30-minute corridor. And then this cross-town route, the 33, we think has a lot of potential. So making that one a frequent 30-minute route as well. So that would be, this is in kind of the mostly cost-neutral scenario. So higher-frequency service is really a big piece of this. We are reducing duplication and streamlining service in some areas. So a lot of the outer routes, we're suggesting that we streamline and connect major destinations as best we can with bidirectional service. People like bidirectional service over service that operates in one direction because it means that they can get to destinations in both directions easily. It's easier to understand. So we were, as much as we could, we focused on that. So for example, the 10 that goes out to the, I think it's the Westwood neighborhood, that one we actually kept as a one-way loop, just because it's very hard to serve that area without doing that. There are some examples of where we kept some one-way loops in the system, but as long as they're kind of at the end of routes, I think it's a little bit more manageable for passengers. So we did that. We streamlined routes kind of on the outskirts of the system. And then some of those places where we are changing or removing service, most of these are very low sections where you're spending a lot of resources for very little ridership. And we actually have ridership now, so we can say. And so there are some areas that are going to be losing fixed route service, but in the long term or even in the short term, we're suggesting that there will be the on-demand service covering most of these areas. If I look at the number of passengers or number of trips here, this is only less than 1% of passengers would have less service or change service. A lot of these would have access to fixed routes still, but they would have to maybe walk a little bit further to get there. And I recognize that can be a challenge for some people. But this is, but what we're doing with the network is building it out so that 99% of your customers are still going to have service, and most of those are going to have better service. I've got a slide that shows that. And then again, we kind of focused on weekday versus weekend service. This is just a lot of numbers, but it basically shows the frequency and the different routes in the preferred scenario. So this is, these are some of the impacts of the recommendations. And so this, what we did is we were able to calculate the number of people that are within a five-minute walk to transit service. So that's a pretty reasonable walk for most people. In fact, even if they're, you know, right on the line, that doesn't mean that on the other end of their trip, they're not walking. So, but this is a, it's about a quarter of a mile. That's usually a reasonable distance for most people who are able to get to the stop. And so what we did is we said, well, in the existing network, how many of those people have access to 30-minute service or better? And 60-minute service. So 60 minutes is the blue. And so you can see, most of your riders right now, or the most of the population, I should say, have access to hourly service. In this new network, that goes up pretty dramatically. So about a third of your passengers, of the population, I should say, not your passengers, but your population will have access to 30-minute service or better. That's just the population. When we look at jobs, that goes up even more dramatically. So about half of the jobs that would have access to the network would now have access to 30-minute service. So while the total number of jobs and population goes down just a bit, and this does not include some of these on-demand zones that we'll talk about kind of in the future. This is just within the fixed route network. It stays essentially the same, a little small drop in terms of population and jobs, but the access for people is going up in terms of better frequent service, more frequent service. Then the other thing that we looked at was some of the expanded service priorities. So these are things that in a non-cost-neutral scenario, we would want to prioritize these. This is one of the questions that we have on the survey that we've got out right now, and I'll show you a link to that. And basically said, you know, these are the things that we would recommend you have. We didn't prioritize them, but these are all improvements to the network, to the existing recommended network, I should say, the recommended network, not the existing recommended, but the recommended network, and how would you build on that network over time? And so a lot of these are frequency improvements. There are a couple of on-demand zones, one in Sauk Rapids, one in South St. Cloud. And then even a new route that would continue out to Opportunity Drive. And then basically service hour improvements, so service span improvements. And we're asking folks to look at these different priorities and to help us prioritize them. So maybe what else we'll do in terms of service expansion priorities to show you what those are. So one of the first ones would be Route 5, and getting that up to 30-minute services as soon as we can. I think that's kind of a priority. In the cost-neutral scenario, we really weren't able to do that. And compared to some of the other routes, we felt like this was probably the weaker, higher ridership route. So this, we delayed. But ideally, you'd get this to 30 minutes in the short term. In the longer, then the other thing we would suggest is that the 4 would be continued out to this Westwood area. And so you'd have this connection from downtown St. Cloud to the VA and out, making that loop, and also serving this McLelland area too. So this route would be one direct connection. This would be a big change for the folks out here because currently, to get anywhere, they have to transfer to either the 1 or the 2. And then the other thing we're suggesting here is that this would be a kind of a cross-town service that would connect most of the medical area in Sartell, the Walmart, the medical center, and then down to the new Transit Center in Wade Park. Another improvement here that we would recommend in the, you know, I would say in the short to medium term, and we'll see what, you know, kind of what folks think in terms of priority. This may be one of the priority things, but initially, what we're suggesting is that these two routes would be every two hours. Now, these are probably one of, these are a couple, right now, this Route 12, which operates down Roosevelt, is probably one of the weaker fixed routes, except around the north end of by St. Cloud State. You've got other routes that are serving that area. So we split this into two services that, two routes that run every two hours. It's not ideal, but it's a good way to kind of provide that coverage and not take away service. In the, I would say, in the not-so-long term, you'd probably want to think about getting those back to hourly service so that you, then that would serve a new area in South St. Cloud, and then it would kind of bring back service on this Route 12. The other thing would be a new on-demand zone in Sauk Rapids, serving some of the areas out here. I think this is on the other side of 10. And the high school, the high school, now keep in mind, the high school would continue to be served in the short term with a kind of a peak or a service that would hit the bell times. So those would, the high school would still continue to be served, but in the short term, what we're recommending is that you really focus your service where you're getting most of your ridership. But longer term, I know this area is growing, and this is where we could introduce an on-demand zone. Same thing with South St. Cloud. These are kind of developing areas and changing, and so we thought an on-demand zone there in the longer term could make a lot of sense and connecting back into the new Transit Center over here. This would be a new route to Opportunity Drive. So again, this is something that we think could happen in the not-so-distant future. And then these would all be service improvements, service hour improvements. So with that, maybe before I move on to, on to this, and kind of, this is where we're asking the existing passengers and you and other people in the community to give us your input. We want to hear about what you think about these changes. Not that we are making these in a, you know, without getting input. A lot of this, a lot of these changes have been based on input we've already received, but we want, now that there's something a bit more tangible, we want them to react. So we do have what we call is kind of a story map website that's set up, and this is an opportunity for people to kind of find out a little bit more about the, some of the changes and some of the, why the changes are being recommended. They can see where, you know, frequency improvements are made, where some of the other changes are made. And then associated with that is the survey. We're asking them to give us their input. And we've been getting some, but we need to get more. So we've got a QR code. You could even scan this if you can stand up and look at the screen. But this QR code will take you directly to this story map. And then we're, then we're doing community events as well. So we're going to be tailing at the Transit Center at some of the major stops, at Crossroads, we'll be at Sauk Rapids, we'll be at the, I think, probably at the Walmart in Sartell. And that's probably where most of the riders are going to be coming through. And then we'll be at the Ben Keben County Fair. We're doing outreach to the Technical College in St. Cloud State. And if there are other suggestions that you might have, but we're looking into getting out and talking to passengers, getting there as much as we can. So maybe I will stop there and see if there are any questions. Would you like me to go back to one of the slides that I went through relatively quickly? I'm happy to do that.
Questions? Comments?
Sure, if I may, I'll just inform everyone that we'll get you a copy of the presentation.
Good.
We'll send it directly to your email, so you have a copy in your inbox. You can just go through it slide by slide. So if any questions, not now, but if you have questions later, then you can share it with Dave and Phil at a later time.
I got just one on the, on that new Transit Hub in Wade Park on Sundial and Second. What would that do, I guess, just to the downtown transit, I mean, capacity and frequency? I mean, how much of a, maybe just explain that a little bit more, because I know we have one hub right now that calls all the smokes. How is that going to work in operation?
It'll allow less traffic and less congestion down there. It'll allow us better connectivity to kind of switch those things up. And there's people that may not need to go to downtown St. Cloud. There's people that might not need to go to that hub in Wade Park. So it just allows us better connectivity, and we're, and we can split up the times instead of saying, okay, we've got one hub, so we need everybody in there at this time or this time. It allows us to kind of make the schedules a little bit more efficient too. Paul, maybe if you've got any additional thoughts other than the most kind of three points.
No, I think those are the big ones, Dave. I think the, this is part of the reason why we feel like the 33 and getting that to a frequent route is because of those connections. So, and that would serve the new Transit Center. And so, yeah, I think it's, I think it's exactly what Dave said. It's about kind of taking some of the, some of the intensity out of the downtown Transit Center, putting it over here, but also then providing those kind of cross-town connections for folks. Because many of the trips that we looked at, you know, we did kind of isolate some of these areas and looked at, how are people traveling now? How are they, how are they using, not just, not just transit, but how are they just, how is everybody in the region traveling? And what we found was that in this area in particular, Wade Park and even in Sartell, many of the trip destinations were not to downtown St. Cloud. And so if you're taking folks, if you're taking everybody, I mean, there are a lot of destinations in downtown St. Cloud, so we want to maintain that as a Transit Hub. But this kind of reemphasizes this area, and it gives that, also gives operational flexibility about what you can and can't do. And you don't have to send everything to downtown St. Cloud and still offer people good service.
Well, that's why, I mean, the, obviously, when this system originally was there, it had 20,000 students in St. Cloud State within four blocks of where that hub was, and that's why it was there.
Yeah.
Because 60% of your ridership was in that area, so it would make more sense. And there's always been discussion, especially around there, of probably having less traffic in that area from a lot of those downtown folks. So if that makes it easier, yeah, it would make it easier for folks to travel around You already had your time today.
Just a quick, you know, I'm familiar with the fixed routes, but how does the on-demand work? I'm not familiar with that. So it's more of a kind of call-in public service. Our pair of transit services, we take reservations up to seven days out and no later than, we don't take any same-day rides. This, when we operate it before, and similar to what most on-demand services are, is you call same day. And so it's kind of, you're in that zone, and when a bus is available, we'll come pick you up.
Kind of like a dial-a-ride.
Very similar. You just don't have the eligibility criteria a lot of it.
It had run for a little while in Sartell, and it would go to your front curb, I believe, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
And so, in my opinion, it's kind of that evolution of transit, public transit of, rather than standing at a, in a less dense area, rather than standing waiting for that bus to come every 30 minutes or an hour. Gets a little more Uber-ish, if you will.
With a bus.
Nice.
Thanks. Yeah, and some of these could be shared ride too, so, you know, it is, it's a more efficient way. And I mean, the dial-a-ride is too, but it, you know, this is where technology is really kind of helping the industry, and that now we have these tools that are available that make it relatively easy to trick-share and to do this within a zone like this. And there's lots of, lots of examples of where this is being done elsewhere in the country. It's a good, I think it's a good solution for still allowing service, but not, you know, it's, it's, it allows you to kind of focus your resources in a better way, I think.
I have a question, probably for Dave.
Sure.
And I might be jumping ahead. When they're looking at, this is just very early on about expanding service, and they're going to give us options, are they going to do a cost analysis with that along with that? How many courses do we need? Are we going to have to increase our fleet, increase our employees?
Yep, that'll all be part of the record.
Okay, because that's what I'm most interested in, is the cost to implement this, what stages, and how many more buses, and how many employees? I mean, are we still short employees?
We are. The good thing about this, and Paul, I'll toot your horn a little bit, but, and not commit you to anything, but the same firm did the loose study, and they were able to bring down their FTEs and their demand needs by a significant amount. And so we're kind of hoping when this all plays out, where it lands, that maybe we're able to save some in that arena, that instead of us now having six vacancies, we have zero vacancies because we don't need as many bodies to provide the services before. So.
And the reason I ask that question is it goes back to our budgeting. Right now, even the capital improvement, we're putting money away for things. We put money away for buses, our share. And if we have to increase our fleet by 10 buses, those things are expensive, as we all know, and that changes your budget too.
Absolutely.
So it's something we have to look at. I'm hoping.
I don't think we can currently get them for two years, so.
Oh, yeah. That's true. We don't worry about that. Maybe three by then.
Yeah, and I'll just, I'll just add to that. I think that one of the goals with this would be to build an ideal network. And I say mostly cost-neutral, there may be, you know, it's going to be probably fairly close, but what we've done is give you some flexibility. So if I go back to the recommended scenario here where we have frequency, as much as we want to have this frequency, these are release valves. So if you don't, if you need to save costs and if you need to save operators, this is one place to do that. We would like to provide 30-minute frequency. And like I said, we're trying to get to as close to cost-neutral as we can, but taking away frequency at different times of the day, even on whole routes, which you have had to do, that does fundamentally change the structure of the network. It just is, people like frequency, they respond to frequency, and it's an ideal situation. So there are release valves in the network that we have designed, I think, that allow you to do that.
If I can.
And likewise, you could scale up if, you know, if you have operators, if you have additional operating revenue, you can scale this up. And that's where some of those frequency improvements would come into play.
If I could follow up with that, the reason I asked that too is, well, on both sides of me, Sartell, Wade Park, when we went, we tried to have 24/7, 24/7 police coverage. I looked at this as the same thing. When we did that, you need more cars, you need more bodies. When we did that, you need more cars, you need more bodies. And so when you're looking at every 30-minute routes and expanding, I'll be very interested to see what the cost is on that, because there will be some expense.
There definitely will be, I mean, we're looking. The other thing we're going to have to consider is, you know, as we replace the fleet, maybe it's not 35-foot buses, maybe it's a different looking fleet. What that is at this point, we don't know yet. You know, maybe it's more smaller buses, maybe it's 30-foot buses, maybe it's a combination. We don't know what that's going to.
And that's something to help us with. Okay.
All right, any other questions? All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate the, the update.
Thank you.
And we'll go on then to department updates. Number 14, dial-a-ride update.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Updating on dial-a-ride and dispatch. Just first kind of looking at our rodeo participation over the last year. So last year, as you know, we had three dial-a-ride operators participate in the state rodeo. Two of those placed in first and second place. This past June, they went to the national competition in Florida. While they didn't place, they were there and represented Metrobus. We also have the upcoming rodeo, which is this weekend, and we have three dial-a-ride operators participating in that. That's the state rodeo. Keith Drake, David Peacock, and Chris Osmick. Dispatch update. As you asked about our staffing levels, actually, dispatch is fully staffed. We have, our last rider was in December of 2023, so we've been doing good with the dispatch. Our dispatchers are taking, we've handled approximately 89,000 calls so far, or that was in fiscal year 2023. So far for 2024, we've taken 66,000. Our call duration in 2023 was about 2 minutes and 9 seconds. We've gotten that down to about a minute and 50 seconds. In addition to handling the calls, the dispatchers are also chatting through an online chat tool, booking rides and doing ride cancels. And just to note also with those call numbers, those are an approximate amount because they do not include any calls that are transferred in from other, other lines that have come into the, to the company or between locations. We did upgrade the phone system in 2024. It was a new phone system and chat system that has enhanced our ability to manage the communications more effectively and efficiently. And we also turned on a new feature in our scheduling software today. The, this is called a bad trip locator. What it does is it automatically detects and adjusts any bad trips, things that don't fit within the parameters that we've set of the system, working in the background to move any scheduled rides around to improve the efficiency. It also looks for any rides that our dispatchers were not able to schedule, so they put them into what's called the unscheduled rides, and the system will grab those and try to place them. So it'll help our dispatch staff with the kind of the robot working in the background, helping them out and improving our efficiency on the outside end. For dial-a-ride, again, we currently are fully staffed. We have three operators that just, or two operators that just started this week, another one starting in July, and then another one slated to schedule in August. So that does put us at fully staffed for dial-a-ride, hoping that all works out and stays that way. Our ridership for fiscal 2024 right now is at 114,774. That is an 11% increase from the same period of 2023. We are operating at an average on-time performance rate of 99%, highlighting our commitment to punctual and reliable service. Our bus orders, I know you guys have been updated on that several times, but we have eight buses in production and an A to B, another A to B ordered. We are continuing to go through our software improvements, and we plan to update and optimize that dial-a-ride ride scheduling software even more. That includes identifying and implementing the enhancements to further streamline our operation and enhanced service delivery. Our goals for the upcoming year, maintaining that on-time performance level. Our goal is 95% or greater, which we usually are at 99%. And we achieve this by monitoring ridership and the on-time performance monthly, collaborating, collaborating with the operators and the dispatchers on ride efficiency and adjusting schedules as necessary, as well as continuing to monitor our call hold times in the dispatch group. This again is accomplished by monitoring those call levels, hold times and call lengths, and working closely with the dispatchers to improve efficiency and adjust schedules as needed. That is our update for dial-a-ride and dispatch.
Any questions or comments? All right, then we are at the point of, German, is there a, oh.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, sign a paper saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 4:55, but the record.